Pull over. Freeze. I don't move. 10-4 returning to the beat. You are under arrest. Bad boys, bad boys, what you going to do, what you going to do when I come for you? Hey guys, how you doing? Coming in hot. I understand that things are a little different in Otter Creek today. But nonetheless, let's go ahead. I'll show you guys what I was planning on doing. Listen, I put at the top is a link to um, unadulterated uh, stream. Please go over there because my plan was, was to do a commentary stream. So, here she is. So this is across from the city hall, I believe.
No, you don't. That does not go home with us.
That's what I heard Shane, that's what I've heard. Flux, how are you doing?
4,319 others.
Flux, we were trying to, they're supposed to have a city hall meeting tonight. Oh, this is too much. So, guys, what's happening is, uh, those of you that don't know, the town hall meeting has been canceled. Um, yeah. So yay, we're doing something. We're going to be hanging out, having a good time. Um, and that is what, so let's see, where'd it go Flux? That's what's happening right now. We thought we were gonna have a fireworks show. And wait a second, you know, we thought we were gonna have a fireworks show, and instead we're just gonna have, it's gonna be, oh, it's a cold rainy day. Oh guys, alright, let's see here. So one of the council members couldn't make it, that's interesting, isn't it? Seems like, is that what stops you from having a quorum? You can always appoint somebody. They can't make it. Nobody's hit me with a stick yet Flux. Nobody's hit me with a stick yet. But anyway, um, with that, let's see, we're gonna start goofing off as usual. That didn't work. Didn't work out right, did I want to? Crystal Smith, meetings canceled. Thank you Crystal for the super chat, thank you for letting us all know. It is, um, and also thank you Rabbit. 6,000 is my goal right now. Everybody else is 6,000. Yes, if you haven't subbed, please do. Please share, please like, do all those wonderful things. And let's listen, so this is Madam Mayor on the right, who is on the air guitar filter there. Yes, this is fun, guys. This is, these are my type of people. This is where I like to be. Russ is still on the board, he no longer will be, hang on, see Nolan Nader over here. Oh, Russell expires my, now trying to delay, trying to see how they can get around it somehow. That's wild, they only have three members on there. That's why you should always look for seven is the magic number. So, alright, let me, I'm gonna turn their volume up a little bit because they're having fun, I wonder what they're doing, I'm being nosy. I wish Madam Mayor knew me and she would come on here, let's talk to her.
Georgia's here actually, she's parked. She, she was in the video a few minutes ago, but she's parked right back there.
Everybody's just sitting like we're at the drive-in. They're eating all the popcorn. I told everyone to bring popcorn. They sure did. Hey, welcome to the party!
That's awesome, they are having a party. How fun is this? Alright, let's see, they normally have five, um, that's right. And you know what, here's the thing, we don't know where she is. Maybe she will show up. Maybe she will. Yeah, I can't listen to that noise. Okay, hang on, you know what, I've been hit up a lot here past couple of days. Okay, I want to tell you guys something. So we've been hit up a lot the past couple of days about streaming stuff. Microphones, things like this, stuff that you think is funny, is comical, all that stuff. It's, it's great for some things, it's great for some streams, it's great for when you're doing a video, but not for a live. That's, that would be my only suggestion for everybody, I would never do it for a live. However, you also have to remember, there are some people, everybody, that you have hairs, right, in your ears, that, that ting, uh, they tingle based on the sound waves. And those hairs, um, some people, it just drives them up the wall. Somebody like our friend Valhalla who been, he spent two tours in Iraq as a machine gunner. His hearing is a little bit different than ours, you know what I'm saying? So like high pitched things like that drives him up the wall. Um, so just remember that if you ever want to be, do something like this, sound, no matter how much you hate your own voice, people would rather hear that than anything else, they accept your own voice. The reason why we hear it weird, we hear it different, doesn't matter, just, um, yeah, try to keep a clean sound, that'd be my thing. But they're having a good time, I think that's great.
We'll find out what's legal next month.
Oh George! George is here! Hey Zach, what's up? Yay! Alright, I've got the sound on, this is as high as it goes. Let's see if I can do something with it.
Hello New Zealand.
We found out when we pulled up, right here.
Is that better? Can you guys hear a little bit better?
You really have a way of convincing. Thank you Kimberly.
No, he said when he got here that he got an email. Right, he said he got an email.
He said that you were playing a silly little game.
Who is the white man? We're not sure.
Okay Stacy, like you just officially, I want to talk to you. That is so cool. A 16 year old Southern California surfer girl. Totally want to talk to you.
That's my silver fox, she brought the popcorn. Someone should have brought marshmallows. Could add a little bonfire.
Wait, is Deanna, is that Madam Mayor?
We appreciate your attendance, it looks like there's no meeting tonight, but we're kind of hanging out.
Is that Deanna?
Just make sure that there's no fireworks in front of the meeting like there usually is.
It's too beautiful to be inside.
It's nice outside, so we can hang out here for a bit.
Tomorrow it'll warm back up.
That's LA, she owns the wood shop.
I had to work on a puppy.
He knew. Ain't no clerk.
Hi expert.
Cool, awesome.
Yeah, ain't no clerk, ain't no sue, right? That's what I heard. He got paid though, didn't he?
He got paid.
When he walked out. That's all it's about for him, is getting his hundred bucks.
Roslyn, how are you doing?
Is that how your brain works?
I make a hundred bucks in five minutes. You make a hundred bucks once a month.
Tell us how you really feel undercover.
Aren't you glad you weren't part of the circus anymore? This town didn't know a good thing when they had it.
Little Tom Petty right there.
I gotta keep it family friendly.
Yes.
We have a sidebar going on all the time.
Dan Berry Sports Highlights, how are you doing? Legal Live, what's up?
You're a serialist? Serialist undercover? I'm a coca, coca list.
A coca list?
A coca list. I like that, it sounds awesome.
Saying Madam Mayor, here comes Dawn.
Thank you. She's got a different product in her. Oh my gosh.
Are those tents legal, someone asked?
Peter, no. No, we're waiting to see. The meeting's been canceled, we'll see if Lynette comes in. We're having a good time, we're just chilling out right here. It'll be great. Ooh popcorn, I want some popcorn.
Where's the clerk?
Did it bring me in? Well, the clerk showed up, the clerk has to be there, take minutes.
You don't want to be a clerk?
I'm a wannabe? I'm cozy. I'm so cozy, I'm not a wannabe.
She's a wannabe?
She wants to be using my mic, I just wanna, I want a selfie with you.
I'm sorry.
Me and the farmer.
Thanks for the two.
That's what you were gonna wear to a meeting tonight?
Why not?
Looks about right?
Well, you know the decorum here, right? No one seems to appreciate that, so. You're making some assumptions also.
Hold on. Did you wear your overalls to a meeting?
No.
No, because you know the decorum.
Well, you're one of the new word, I'm glad to hear that.
Oh sweetheart.
Don't call me that, please.
I haven't smoked.
What's happening? Okay. She was at the Christmas thing. Right there. Yeah, that's, um, that's Deanna, right?
Thanks Liz for the two.
Do you care what's going on over here?
A little bit.
That guy had a ponytail?
He came to my, my party. I call it circus theater.
It's really not much different than any other meeting they've had. It's a circus. We're just having it outside, that's all.
Now is this the same Dawn that's, um, okay, Dawn McCon. So this is the meeting location, Ellen. They've canceled it, there's a sign on the door. And hang on, sorry, yeah, devil dog, I just saw it, hang on.
It's Stuart. Stuart must have canceled the meeting. Stuart?
Did Stuart cancel the meeting?
How would I know that?
I don't know.
Maybe Russell canceled the meeting.
I'm trying to catch up, I'm trying! You gotta help me!
She's a poser. Undercover's a poser.
Don't worry, be happy. So we just got, we're gonna get hit.
That might be Carl. I don't know what his bike looks like, but it could be Carl. The one on this other bike though, is that not the boyfriend of the?
So today was supposed to be the, the city meeting. The town meeting.
Council seats today?
Cancelled the meeting, and this is everybody's meeting up out front.
Yeah, they were supposed to do that again.
This is from Madam Mayor's, her link is at the top if you want a clear link. I wanted to do a commentary over this. I figured you guys would tell me what's going on, would tell me who I need to know, all the characters, everything else, and we'll have a good time.
So if Russell's calling the shots, it's okay. If anybody else is calling the shots, not okay.
With Russell, it's always do as I say, not as I do.
Everybody should know that by now.
I wonder what the resolution is?
Oh, I know who that is.
2401?
It's like an interlocal agreement with the emergency operations.
This is the first time I've seen this.
It's just like a formality that they have to do with all the different towns.
I'm too busy doing actual work.
I've got it maxed.
It's hard to read, this plexiglass is terrible.
Stuart, Stuart dropped out, so he's definitely not coming.
I heard he had to leave to find a middle name. But Dawn still showed up, so I feel like he wants to be a part of our show.
You are the circus there Dawn. The ringmaster.
Did Stuart leave to go find a middle name?
Stuart, Stuart. Yeah, he needs a middle name. Wouldn't it be Stuart?
Who's the guy back here with the baseball hat filming?
He told me his mom named him that because he'd have a hard time remembering another name. That's what he said.
Why does he have to name himself different names?
His mom told me that he was named that because he'd have a hard time remembering a different name.
The mother or him?
It might have been both. Like he said that his mom was looking out for him.
He must have not gotten the memo.
His buddy didn't call him.
Thank you Dee Robertson, biscuit boy.
He probably wants to write his name down and say something.
Maybe he wanted to play my air guitar.
I think he did.
Because you know it's all about the bass, about the bass.
About that bass, about that bass, about that bass.
I could hang out with these chicks, man, I love them. I was too loud, I had to have the door closed on me.
Maybe he's filming for Marla.
She was looking for someone. Mister man. Well hopefully they can school her on a real fast.
She was all ready to play a song?
I know, I brought all my stuff.
Hey, we almost have as many people watching tonight as are on TC's channel.
Hey guys, please welcome someone who is helped me out, this is beginning. Nurse TT, welcome to the chat.
Hey, how is it, how is everybody?
I'm so glad you came here, uh, people have been saying, will you get somebody on here who knows what's going on? So you're that person?
Oh, I know some, but I don't know.
Or you're the last one that, my messages. I've had so many messages from so many great people, I'm looking down, trying to do this real fast, I was like, Nurse TT, boom!
That's awesome, that's awesome.
So do you know everybody that's on screen right now?
Uh, Deanna is in the black.
Okay.
Madam Mayor is the one holding the fuzzy microphone.
Okay.
Jessica Kruger is the one holding the other microphone with the sunglasses on.
Oh, that's Jessica?
I don't know.
I don't recognize her.
I don't know what the guy's name is with the beard though.
Okay.
I can't remember what his name is, somebody in the chat might know. Hi Becca.
Oh yeah, hey, this is a good one. Heidi, thank you. Guys, please do not contact any of these people, okay?
Yeah, they got enough, they got enough going on right now.
Even though I love Jessica.
She does seem like she's a lot of fun, doesn't she?
Oh yeah, you know, she sent me a message and, uh, it was this. Oh hang on, where do you, there it is. Oh, that show!
There it is.
All my videos, my images show.
I can see it.
I can't see it. Oh, there it is. Yeah, I love that. That was so wild though, wouldn't show. Then she sent me that, she said that, it was the other night, she said, yeah, you can show, and I was like, oh, okay, cool.
Yeah, she seems like she's really fun.
Okay.
Oh my god, these guys are rich.
Thank you by the way, you see, you can see the chat, I assume?
Yes, I got it now.
Five or six more minutes before showtime, let's see what happens.
I got it now.
Albert Fuller is here, he didn't, he didn't get the memo.
I am a coca list, but I'm not kidding.
So there's George.
This guy is? Oh no, George is holding the camera, yes. I know George.
So, the guy in the blue right here, I can't really see his face, I can't really tell who he is.
Who what now? The guy in the blue?
Yeah, the one that came up.
Yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can now, I just, I had to turn them down.
Okay. So, I believe, yes, that is Albert Fuller, if I can say him correctly.
Yeah, so the chat saying.
Yeah, he is in a lot of the meetings, and when Russ Assus was the mayor, he seemed to go like against Russ Assus a little bit, like, he stayed, he wants to stay on like, uh, what is that rule? I can't think of the name of the rule, the one that, uh, they always use for like council meetings, you said it the other day.
Russ's Rules of Orders?
Yes, yes. So he follows that a lot, so he's always trying to keep them on track. Well since Mayor, Madam Mayor came on, he seemed to have flipped over to Russ's side and was like taking up for Russ and going against them, so it was really weird how he kind of flipped. So I'm not sure how I feel about him.
But, so, uh, Dawn here in the, in the overalls and, um, Albert here in the blue shirt, they're both city commissioners though, right? Or town commissioners?
No, he, no, Albert is not on the council, no. Dawn is.
Alright, gotcha, gotcha.
No, he got, the guy in the blue, um, Albert Fuller, he has a problem with Zen, who is the acting mayor now, because they got some property disputes going on.
Seems to be a common theme here.
Oh no, you're right Lisa, he doesn't believe it's his family that li, that has the property, but he holds up for that.
Thanks Jane for the two.
Yeah, so Trinity said Albert was in charge of permitting under Russ, but he, he wasn't being paid very well, was he? I don't know who's coming up. Oh, is this the Hudson Sisters? Yeah, looks like it.
And who are they?
So their dad used to be the mayor a long time ago, and he pretty, from what I understand, if I got this correct, and chat can correct me, but his, their dad kind of started like this whole Hudson mentality is what they call it in Otter Creek, where it was like a big family. And then when he was not mayor anymore, it kind of went downhill from there. So that's Darlene. But I don't see Joyce. And Joyce has a tracheotomy, so she has to cover up a hole in her neck to talk.
She was on the, um, the Christmas stream.
Yes, 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 she's super, super sweet.
Hudson Sisters.
Yep, so they're the Hudson Sisters.
This is the greatest thing ever.
Just being in a small town like this and having a gathering outside of city hall, when there's no or town hall I should say, and there's no meeting, and everybody's just gathered, like it's one big party.
Isn't this cool?
Yeah. So I think they're hanging out here too, because they're waiting for a secret meeting, see if a secret meeting happens, like it did the one time, where Russ had like a private meeting outside of town hall. I don't think we know who called it off, Melanie.
Alright, I want to see this comment. Alright, Jeffrey Montgomery, uh, the Hudson Sisters of the harlot town, the recent Christmas in the creek happened, that's awesome.
Yeah, if you go back, there's a couple of videos where they were in town hall, and they were fighting with Russ about doing Christmas in the creek. And Russ kind of was a jerk about it. He didn't want to do it, and the Hudson's, and Darlene I believe is the one that was like, well if you would have, if you could have given me $500, you know, out of the town fund for this, I could have done it. He was like, well why don't you do it? And she's like, it's too late now.
I did see one of those videos.
I think I, I think he watched it. So that's Brett talking, that's Madam Mayor's husband.
For those of you that haven't heard, here's the notice on the door. I mean, this can easily happen when you only have a quorum of three people. It only takes one person that can't make it to cancel the meeting, so. There you have it.
I want to know who typed that up. So chat, help me out. Who's the guy with the bandana on his head? I cannot.
I don't think they knew before, did they?
I don't know. I cannot remember what his name is.
I don't know. Does Otter Creek have pizza places?
Linda, Linda Evers says they're hoping Lynette and Jod show up so they can be arrested. I have a feeling that they got a heads up that the meeting was canceled before everybody else. That's why they're not there.
Would Albert was being paid for zoning? Was he like a zoning administrator type?
Under Russ, I believe, when Russ was mayor.
They want some of that popcorn. But it's in you and they want it. They're extracting the butter out of your blood.
Thank you, Rabbit.
So Trinity just, Trinity Meadows said Dawn pretty much admitted Russ called out, so they can't have the meeting now. So Russ is the one that called out.
What do you think?
Yeah, I think so.
He says it's a circus, but he stays here.
That's a new council member and DM saying Carl.
Okay, alright, yes, that's right. And then it was the younger guy too. I don't see him.
What do you want to say to the fine people that came out here with us tonight? You got over 9,000.
Wow.
Holy crap.
We're the show, unfortunately.
We're the show.
Sorry, guys.
But hey, all week this week, we got a lot of stuff coming out to the channel. We appreciate you coming out. Alex, thanks for the seven.
Everybody's waiting for Lynette to get arrested.
Ethics going on.
Yo Cajun Joe, what's happening? Yeah, Jeremy is in Ohio and um, oh wait, hold on, that's not Carl.
That's not Carl, okay.
Carl's a vet, I think.
Yeah, I don't know who that guy is. I've seen him at the meetings, but I don't know that they ever really said his name.
You're on it. You got something to say to the people?
So expert, the meeting, a couple, I think it was last month where Dawn and uh, Russ walked out.
I know.
It was either last month or the month before. The two council members were seated at the table that day. That night. So those are the two new council members that were going into the open, the one year seats. Um, that were unopposed. There's Biscuit Boy. So he, he does not. Go ahead.
Yeah.
No, go ahead.
No, no, you're saying, so there was an election?
No, no.
No.
Because those two seats were unopposed, the law, the town lawyer said that they could be seated because they were going unopposed and they didn't need to hold an election. And Dawn and Russ threw a fit about it. And then that's when they got up and walked out.
Yeah, I think you have to have an election because you don't know about write-ins. You have to.
Well, because of the new law in Florida though, because they had to fill out that Form 6 or whatever, that form for their financial. If you didn't fill that out, you couldn't be a write-in anyway.
Yeah, so like Tennessee did something like that and ah, I don't know. It, it's weird how elections are. Like I'm, obviously I'm thinking just off the top of my head. I don't know Florida's laws or anything else. And I'm thinking like, you know, having open elections are, is always the, the better way to do it. Because then there's never a question.
So I just seen uh, no, no, I can't, I don't know how to pronounce your name, love. Um, she said, tell Nurse TT that Stuart Stewart dropped out. Yes, I knew that. And so Dawn and Laura Mott are auto too. So then whose seat would be, because this is what's also confusing. Whose seat would be elected then? Dawn or um, Russ's? Would there even need to be an election at that point? Okay, you seen that. See, the whole thing was is that they used to do one, like the one-year terms. There was two seats one year and then three seats the following year for elections. And then somewhere under Russ, it got, like somebody dropped off or quit. And so that seat was left empty and then it, so then they had like four seats to fill one year on an election. So everything got, so they were trying to get it back on track with the two seats one year, three seats next year. And so that's why it's all kind of messed up right now with these seats.
Man, this so reminds me of a town I know. Oh, it's so bad.
Probably every small town in, in the United States of a hundred people.
Yeah, there's uh.
Dawn, as he was walking away, he goes, none of the real supporters.
So there are a lot of people here that, you know, are players and all this. So we're not going to know who they are unless we live there. I won't know who they are anyway. But chat probably will if they live there. Now that's Deanna. She's so funny. Did you catch what she just said?
She has stuff. She has stuff tonight she has to do.
I don't have time for that. I don't have time for that. Ain't got no time for that.
She has been around a few times. She does, is she, she's flipping adventures, right?
Uh, Deanna, yes.
Okay.
That's flipping adventures.
God, I love her, man. I think she hates me though. I think she hates me.
No, no, no. It was her and Jessica that were talking about you.
I know, it's so embarrassing.
They talked about you for three hours. I don't think she hates you at all.
There you go. Deanna built a Lego with us there tonight. There you go.
Oh, she was all into it too. I think she built like three stats. The whole time. She never, I don't even think she looked up once. She was like deep in Lego building.
Next month is Rusty gone.
I hope he is gone.
Oh, I'm pretty sure. Listen. A lot of people hate me, man. A lot of people hate me. Oh.
Oh, White Rabbit.
Oh, is she here? Hey babe, how you doing? Wait, I've got a new avatar found for you. Yeah, be sure and hit that.
Yeah, let's get expert to 6,000 guys. We can do it.
I appreciate that.
I can't wait.
I appreciate it. I want to give a, I want to give my hour time. Oh, I don't know. No, this is so great. Actually, mommy, there's something I thought of about that. It's funny.
Yeah, see.
Thank you, Trinity.
Inner Wolf said there technically is no need for an election though.
Yeah, she's linked at the top. Be sure and um, hey, wait a second. You guys want to do something cool? Have you guys ever done a channel raid before?
Oh, you want to go raid?
So go, what we do is we'll go, we'll raid and everybody hit the orange hearts and just it will light up their, their stream with orange hearts, okay? And then come back over here, we'll watch it and see how they react to it. Dude, we used to, I haven't done one of those in a long time. Holy cow, those are fun. So I'm gonna lose everybody here. Alright, so guys, look, I'm gonna put this in the chat. We're gonna go over there. We're going Madame Mayor's. We're gonna um, uh, just load it full of orange hearts and then come back over here and we'll see how they react, okay? It'll be awesome. We give them our love, alright? Be sure to tell them I sent you too. So here's, I'm putting the link in right now and we'll go, soon as you see the link, we'll start hitting it. This is gonna be awesome. I love you guys. This is so cool. Alright, here we go. Alright, go, 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 go. Where's the, I gotta change my screen. Oh, the chat's not pulling up. Come on, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. I would delay my chat for some reason.
Hi, I'm gonna go pull her channel up.
Oh, come on. Why is YouTube going slow on me?
People looking for Lynette. Have you seen Lynette tonight?
I have not seen her, but I heard she was walking down the street earlier.
I can't get in. Oh, there it is. There it is. Awesome.
Oh, look at all the orange hearts.
Oh, isn't that awesome? Look at that. Look at that. You see it?
That is amazing. Let's see if they.
Isn't that cool? I love doing these.
Oh, that is so cool.
Look at that. Oh, that's awesome. Be sure to hit that thumbs up. Boom. That's awesome. Look at that, guys. What, you're watching her channel right now. Light up. That is y'all. That is so cool. Oh, that is so cool. Look how much fun that is.
That's amazing.
Oh, I love doing it.
I don't think Brett's noticed yet.
No. No, it's so great. When it happens with people, it happens to them the first time. They're like, oh my gosh, what's going on? They don't know what's happening. And a lot of people think like there's a glitch or something. I love that.
Oh my God, look at them all.
Oh, I love this. I'm gonna keep doing it.
Oh yeah, everybody sobbed her too. Sobbed Mayor Ma- or Madame Mayor.
Oh yeah, totally. Yeah, I subscribed today. Or last night, I guess. I didn't know.
Look at all the orange hearts. Oh my God.
Isn't that awesome? Thank you, guys. How cool is that?
Yes.
That is so cool. It is, it's fun to raid. That is awesome. Yeah, that's supposed to be um, Biscuit Boy, I think.
Biscuit Boy is the, the heavyset guy. He was in the back.
Very good darling. Yeah, yes. Absolutely. I love that.
Oh my God, look at, they're still going.
Oh, we'll have to do this again. Oh my gosh, cause like they have, listen, they have like 10,000 people in that chat. You guys just took it over. You realize that, right? You guys made that happen. Everybody got noticed. Everybody, everybody's looking there. Just 10,000 people saying, what's happening right now? And it's y'all. This is so cool. I love doing this. I love doing these raids. Yes, they did. They canceled because of uh, Russ.
Oh, the hearts are still going. Look at that.
I love it because the seat at the door, they're, they're gonna say, I don't know what all these orange hearts gave me.
I thought Deanna had her, the chat up and that's why they were talking about it, about internet being broken. So I'm wondering if she's seen it.
Um, that was uh, um, that's awesome. So that happened to me. Uh, there's a, wait a second, I'm glitching now. Uh, what am I hearing?
I hear a car.
Oh yeah, that's the next video. Sorry. So what happened is um, uh, Purple Phoenix, uh, I was surprised by my, she has a channel. She does like um, true crime stuff and just um, uh, just has her own uh, channel, right? And um, isn't that great? Isn't that awesome? Yaya, how are you doing? Yaya is from Purple's place. So like they would come over, they would raid me and I didn't know what's going on. I had no idea. It was called uh, what was it? The Purple Bombs. And so the people would come in and they start doing purple hearts and little bomb emojis. And I'm like, what is happening here? You, you have no idea. You're sitting there going, you know, you've heard all this stuff about like um, uh, you know, people attacking your channel and what you gotta look out for and also, and also you just, your whole chat lights up, you know, with, with the, whatever color person comes in. Yeah, see? Yaya, right here. That's how they do it. And so um, Libby actually was in here one day. He said, hey, can we go uh, raid somebody's channel? And I was like, dude, I've never done a raid. I've been part of them, but like this would be exciting. And we did and it was so much fun. And then um, uh, Monograph, who's another streamer, gosh, I haven't talked to Monograph. I haven't seen him in forever. He came in and raided me. That was really cool. It's just, it's an exciting thing and it's great for smaller channels. Or as you just saw, it's great when these big streams are going and everybody gets to see us. That is really cool. So I thank you guys. That was fun.
Uh, expert Miami shoe is that tug and tug, the umbrella guy is live with Megan right now.
Well, I didn't get an invite. No, I stay away from her. She's mean to me. She's mean to me. But. Reform Congress, thank you. There's nothing there. And I have to say, Nurse TT, I owed you a very big thank you from a stream the other day. And I went back, I found your super chat and I'm so sorry. I did not recognize you. I did not see it up, but uh, thank you so much.
Oh, stop. You're gonna make me blush.
Nah, I mean, it's, it's all of y'all. This is um, um, means so much. Uh, so watch to see if Madame Mayor comes in. If she comes in, she is more than welcome to come up here and hang out. That'd be awesome. Uh, and you know what? Here's the thing. I am not, I have not, I do not want to talk to any of these people in, excuse me. I like them as people. If they, if somebody wants to talk, I'll be happy to talk to them about anything that does not involve anything that deals with this issue that's going on. Tell them about your life growing up in Florida. I love it. Uh, you know, uh, was it Otter Creek? The, it's, it's beginnings are a uh, they had a uh, a paper mill, not paper mill, but a wood mill. They made uh, they cut cypress and uh, made uh, crates, fruit crates, citrus crates. And there used to be a couple of trains that went through there. Uh, it's just, it's an awesome, um, it's an awesome deal. Uh, what happened here? Yaya, I've paid you too much. Hmm, excuse me. Yaya, you are, Yaya is um, uh, she's one of my, oh, 19 months. 19 months we've been hanging out. And uh, probably before that. And um, oh, hang on, I got another comment I see right above it. But Yaya, um, she um, she's done a couple of streams with me and she is awesome. She's an incredible person and she just, she's one of the people like everybody else is just, YouTube is the new television. And so I love having Yaya around. She's awesome. And so I love having Yaya around. She's awesome.
I love her screen name. Love her name.
Oh, she's, she's just cool, man. She's really cool. And if my beautiful bride is somewhere, uh, Stacy Schmidt says, I want to be on with the White Rabbit. I'll see, I'll see if I can pull some strings for you, Stacy.
I can listen to White Rabbit talk all day. Love her accent. Makes me feel like home.
See babe, she hates her accent.
Oh no.
She thinks she sounds um, very country.
There's nothing wrong with that.
I love it. I absolutely love it. Now it's um, but she'll uh, we'll see. Stacy, um, I'll try. Uh, you guys have to message me somehow. Uh, Discord's the best, um, or uh, you send me an email and if you ever want something like that to happen, I'll do my best. Linda Looper, Lopper Looper, uh, we'll go with Linda. Why was the meeting canceled? They didn't have quorum. Uh, Russ was unavailable today. We're gonna say he, we're gonna say he had a tummy ache. A little gout maybe, a little gout on his foot. Reform Congress gifted five expert memberships. Thank you so much, guys. There should be a link to the Discord in the members thing. If anybody has any idea how to make a beautiful Discord, please contact me because I need help. And um, uh, Discord, I was hoping to uh, oh, just stopped by to say hello, the expert, my granddaughter is getting married Friday and we are busy. Get off the tubes. The tubes will be here when you get back, Robin. This is the greatest, most exciting time of your life. I love weddings. This is awesome. Go enjoy it. Take all the video and all the pictures you can, because this is the, it's gonna be awesome. It's gonna be awesome. So and congratulations uh, to your granddaughter and your grandson-in-law. Good luck. Or ways, the other way around. I always forget. It is, it's good luck to the, to the lady and it's congratulations to the man, isn't it?
So expert, I just want to say to everybody, it is totally different when you're on the panel, looking at the chat than when you're in the chat. It's like you can appreciate the chat a lot more when you're up here. Like even though I'm sitting behind my computer. But like, you know, when you're in the spotlight up here and then you go and you read the chat, this chat's amazing.
Oh yeah. Yeah, it absolutely is. And, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Iron Rabbit gifted five memberships. Thank you, Iron Rabbit. Guys, Iron Rabbit also has a Discord you need to find. She puts recipes up there. Oh, maybe I'm not supposed to talk about that. I might just Fight Clubbed myself. Whoops. I love the Iron Rabbit and I want to get her on sometime. She, uh, Iron Rabbit, she was a uh, she is a Vietnam veteran. And I want to ask her, uh, what's it like to be uh, the trailblazer she was? So, or still is, I mean, heck, she's the Iron Rabbit for a reason. I'm sorry, you were saying about the chat?
Oh, I was just saying, just when you're up here and you're reading the chat and not actually in the chat communicating, it's a different feeling. And you get to appreciate them more, I think. Cause like I'm sitting here reading through the chat and I'm just like cracking up. I'm having a hard time not actually laughing out loud.
Oh, that's um, that's absolutely um, laughing out loud is part of reading the chat. Thank you, Yaya. Thank you. Um, uh, Nurse T is, I mean, I can't act up.
Nope, nope. I won't put you in the corner. We're corner buddies. We, we get put in the corner all the time in the chat.
What happens?
Cause we goof off too much. We put ourselves in the corner. Nobody puts us in there. We just, it's a joke between us. Because we go back and forth. I, I guess I was making her laugh so hard the one night that she was gonna pee her pants. So now we talk about Depends. And now I get ads on YouTube for Depends.
That's weird, isn't it? It's weird. It's the freakiest thing. Reform Congress, have a good time at work. Thank you so much for the memberships and uh, super chat and I'll be seeing you soon. Hopefully, hopefully. Hey, Paul Carpenter, how are you? Send me a message in Discord. Should work, I think. Or send me a, uh, yeah, send me a um, an email, theexpert@email.com. Yeah, it's sad. I don't know, but here's the problem with Discord. I don't have, I don't have a vision. Like I know what I like when I see it, but I don't have a vision of how to get there. And what I'd like to have is a place where people can chat, you know, put their thoughts, put their funny memes, their funny pictures. And then also come in and we can have uh, one-on-one discussions. Uh, you know, one-on-one, I mean, like I, I don't know how many people you can have in there as a group thing. Um, and then like watch videos, stuff like that. Uh, we'll see. And Paul Amos, thank you so much for giving me a membership. I appreciate that. Whoever won, who, does it say who won? Oh, yeah, Eileen did. Boom. That was cool. So um, yeah, Eileen, um, you got a membership. Yeah, so definitely hit me up in Discord. That's the best way to do it. I like Discord's messaging system. Anyway, uh, so what else is, is happening? What else do we know um, with the, the hills today? You said that they did a video talking about custody?
Yes, they did. They did a video on, this is a second part. They did one yesterday as well. This was back from spring or summer of uh, 2023 where they were talking to um, I don't want to say her name, HG Lynette's daughters, uh, adoptive daughters, uh, family. So it's the aunt, I believe. And then somebody, I don't know who the other Olga was.
Bye McKinley.
Bye McKinley. Um, so they were talking to them and apparently from what they're saying is the father of the child did not sign the papers, but I've been hearing two different things. Um, but according to Dom, the father did not sign the papers, which was the, that's the lady that was talking to Jeremy's brother or brother, yeah. And or sister, brother-in-law, I don't know. It was so confusing because the phone calls were breaking up so bad. Like you could barely hear. She was going in and out, sounded kind of like a robot. But from what I could make out, they're saying that it was a guardianship and not an actual adoption. But then Jeremy said he wasn't sure that it was not a legal adoption. So it's really hard to say there's really not a confirm, confirmation of that.
So how do you get a, how do you get a guardianship? Why would there be a?
It would have to, I think it would be a mutual agreement. Like they just have to have papers drawn up for guardianship. But it's that basically stating that they can get the child back um, when they're ready or when they're more capable. Um, it's not a like a confirmed, like a, an adoption that, that's it. They have legal custody and there's, you can never get them back, get the child back. Um, and I think in order for Lynette, if it is a guardianship, in order for Lynette to obtain or retain custody, she'd have to go to court and prove the family unfit or whatever and they'd have to legalize it that way. But I don't know about the abandonment laws either, because you know, there's abandonment laws.
Yeah. Yeah, family law gets tricky. It's um, yeah, okay, here we go. Look right here. So this is, yeah, so mother said, uh, sign an address. Uh, mother was forced to sign it. Yeah, uh, they, they don't send me invites, Jeff. Yeah, I don't know. That's um,
I mean, if the video's up, if you, you know, if you want to pull it up, you can watch it. It's just, it's really, it's really difficult to follow because like I said, her phone, her connection was so bad.
You know what? I, I was listening to, and yeah, I mean, about pulling up and everything else. It is, if it's hard to watch it, it makes bad, it makes for bad content. I will watch it later, but you know what? I take this back. Jeffrey, you may, you got me thinking about something. Let's do another raid. You want to?
That would be fun.
Okay, let's go over, let's raid tug. And then get away till I put the, the thing in the chat. We'll go over there and hit all the hearts and everything. And uh, because I'd like to hang out with tug sometime. I think he's a, a cool dude. Oh, it's on Megan Fox's. Oh, that's awesome. We're gonna really disturb her.
I gotta mute.
Do what? What'd you say?
I had to mute because I was laughing.
Oh no, laughter is awesome here. We, we accept that all day long.
I just don't want to interrupt you when you're talking.
No, you totally interrupted me. Uh, I'll, I'll pick up. It's weird. You know, we could talk. There, there's a, there's a lot of squirrel stuff happening. Okay, so this is Megan. And I'm gonna put this in here and then we all go over there and just load it down with orange hearts and say uh, hi. It'll be fun. Ready? We'll do it in three, two, one. There's the link. And I'm, oh wait, hold on, you know what I didn't do? Oh boy. Nope, no, I'm doing the wrong thing. Watch this. Share screen and not that one. Yep, that one. There it is. Share. Go back over here. And at the stage, there it is. So there's the hearts coming in.
Did you get the volume up on hers?
I do not.
Oh no, I'm broken. Oh no. Oh, you know what? I forgot while we, I forgot to play. Oh, I screwed it up so much. Okay. We have to read this last part again because I have something downloaded on the soundboard just for it.
Oh my gosh, she's not reading her chat. Oh my gosh.
Keep going. Keep the hearts going.
Yeah, let's keep on doing it. Oh my gosh.
That is so American. It made my nipples hard in the shape of eagles.
Oh my gosh, this is so funny. That is so funny. Alright, be sure, hold on, you guys are, a lot of y'all are putting um, hearts in this chat. Hang on.
Woo, I pitched it my own Mount Rushmore, baby.
Guys, go, follow this link and go over to Megan's. It's in the chat. Follow that link, go to Megan's and put the hearts there. And then come back and we'll have a good time. Yeah, there's, see, a lot of y'all are putting them here. Hey, Coramstone Organic Garden. You're in the wrong, y'all are in the wrong chat. That's okay. Follow that link to Megan's. You guys will be awesome. It's the dolphin bully. Oh. How come I have no more sound?
And feeling possessed by others, particularly romantic hurters. Also, she's getting a little obsessive with me too.
Someone is not looking at their chat.
She mentions DUI guy in this one. Oh, but she's like jealous. It's not a trait.
Oh, she's not looking at her chat. Oh well, we tried. We tried. Okay, see how I'm saying like, you hear that voice? This voice uh, is really hard on uh, Valhalla. Yeah, she's not reading her chat. Melanie, she's not reading her chat. Oh my gosh, this is so funny. Oh, this is so funny. Flocks, I tried. Oh my gosh.
I love the dolphins.
Uh, I don't even know what any of this means. I'm so lost.
Uh, she's like, I get the, uh, the Ohio thing. She's like, why aren't you talking?
This is so funny. I know, she's still not, how long has it been going on? She's not watching her chat at all.
That looks like they slowed it down.
Oh, they did. They slowed it down because of y'all. Oh my gosh, you guys did that. That is so awesome. Oh my gosh.
There's a million things that Judge is speaking up about.
Oh my gosh, that's hilarious.
I don't even understand what any of this means. I'm just gonna have to skip that because it wasn't even very funny. Like I got let down by that one. The other one was much funnier.
Can you believe that? They slowed down the chat, but they didn't ever read it. Oh, that's so great. They put it on slow mo.
Becca Lynn said they just put it on subscribers only. That's a slap in the face, Megan.
Oh, I told you all, she's a bully. Bully. She's a bully. She's mean to me.
And now you have something to bug her with.
Be like, you look, I, I try to pump your numbers up for you.
And you're blocked, oh, unless there's just subscribers.
Yes, isn't that great? You have to be a subscriber now. So like, oh, oh, and she did say hi. Oh, I didn't see that. That is funny.
Oh, she did say, hey, Raider, hey, expert raiders. That's funny.
Oh, that's so great.
Iron Rabbit said, I super chatted her orange hearts.
I am not a grifter. Trust me. I'm not a grifter. Okay, good. That is so funny though, but still she locked it down. Oh my gosh, y'all, that is so cool. You guys have just, you guys have made my day. I've never had anything like that happen. That is a first for me. That is so cool.
And it happened twice. Two times.
Oh, it's so great. It took her almost five minutes to realize. Iron Rabbit, I super chatted her orange hearts. Oh my gosh.
It's amazing. The good side of YouTube right here.
Oh yeah, this is fun, man. This is, I absolutely love it. This is so, you guys, that was crazy. Oh man. Oh. Oh boy. Alright, so um, okay, so the latest on the hills is, is that we don't know the, the child that's in Lynette's custody. We don't know who, who really should have custody, correct?
Right. Well, we definitely know that Lynette and John should not have custody.
So how do they, how do they get somebody?
Cause they're.
I'm not in, I'm not in the child um, business of any kind. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what they're doing, you know?
She met the grandmother in a Facebook group.
As most people do that find their children.
Convinced her to let her have the baby. Because the mother, biological mother was not, she was, I believe she was a rug addict. And she was not fit to care for this baby. So Lynette convinced her to let her have custody of him.
But how's the grandmother? Did the grandmother have custody?
No, that's where. No, that's where they're saying that the mother was forced to sign the papers.
Okay.
But she felt forced.
Yeah, that's weird. That's weird. And then she takes the kid, uh, to another state, correct? Were they in Ohio?
No, no, they were never in Ohio. Um, I believe Lynette lived in Idaho at one point in time and then she lived in Northport, Florida. When she got the baby, I don't know where she was living at that time, but it looks like.
Yeah.
MLS, you're not the only Michigander. Or was he talking about me? I don't even know.
I guess he's talking about you.
Maybe. Oh, yeah.
Are you from Michigan?
I am.
Oh, well. Does he, do you, does he know this or does he just recognize the accent?
I don't know, maybe. Do I have an accent?
I mean, I don't know. I'm not really paying attention.
An accent, you know, us Midwesterners have a, an accent, but I don't hear it because I live here. We say words differently. Apparently.
What words do you say differently?
Oh, gosh, I don't know. Uh, crayon. Some people say crayon. We don't, I don't, we say crayon.
Crayon is just part of cranberry, like crayon apple.
Yeah, we say crayon. It's a crayon. It's not a crayon. It's a crayon.
Pretty sure it's crayon. Never heard Marines eating crayons. They eat crayons.
Well, there you go. There's one word.
If you're from the South, it might be crayons, you know, might have like a two and a half syllables.
Or we could, we could boil, boily some eggs. That was the cutest thing ever.
Boily? I love that. Yeah, I know. She hates it. I'm like, it is such a great thing. You need to take control of the fact that you said that.
Yes, I love it.
Yes.
I often make up my own, um, my own words and I have a word, I have a term for it, but I can't really say it on here.
For what?
For my own language. Yeah, I make up my own words like that too.
Mine's just stupid stuff I say. Oh, gosh, darling, Tennessee has a language all around. Yeah, um, you know what's funny? Tennessee, uh, it's, the, it's, our flag has three stars, supposed to represent the three grand divisions of the state, west, middle and east. Even though I disagree with what, I think it probably needs like five stars. Uh, because, um, east and upper east are very different and, uh, middle and likes, like Chattanooga isn't really east Tennessee to me. It's, it's like a suburb of Atlanta. And I don't know, it's just, it's all weird. But yeah, our, um, so like, see, I'm from Memphis originally. And it's like my dad's family is from Memphis. My mom's family was from Mountain City. So it's like, these are like the two farthest ends of the state of Tennessee. I always tell people, I've been running for governor since I was born. I've been going up and down the interstate so much. And, um, so my accent's very jacked. I don't have a, a typical accent. Whereas my wife has a very, um, distinct, uh, east Tennessee accent.
So that, that's kind of how I am.
Thank you.
My mother's side of the family is all from the UP. And my, which they sound like.
That's Upper Peninsula. I know that.
Yes. And they sound, they have a Canadian accent, a Uper accent. And then my dad's side of the family was all from Tennessee and they never lost their southern accent. So I kind of grew up, I always called myself a redneck hillbilly. Because I have both sides, you know?
That's cool.
So sometimes you'll hear the Uper come out and sometimes you'll hear the Southern come out.
See, my, uh, my grandmother was from Michigan and, uh, they moved to, uh, Tennessee and, um, I don't know, it's just, it's weird. It's like, how you're saying, but it's like the other way around. It's like, uh, so someone from Tennessee going to Michigan, they came down and, I don't know. It's, it's weird. I, I've never met anybody who has a connection like that before, so. Sorry, that was me just being stupid. Um, I'm just old and tired. I used to troll down in Clarksville. Were you hanging out the, uh, the, with the airborne over there, the hundred first airborne? East Tennessee should go throwing frying pans. Well, let me tell you what, her driving, uh, class was, uh, she just turned left. They'd take him up to Bristol. I'm kidding. No, um, she is, uh, what is that? We always make fun of her. We, meaning my wife makes fun of herself. Uh, it's the, uh, well, she can't throw very good. Well, I don't know. I have no aim, so I, I'm not good. I'm not one to say anything. But, um, no, it's not the frying pan I worry about. It's the, uh, like she says, I know where you sleep.
In a burning bed. Oh, that's funny.
Um, we can, we can. Memphis Tennessee is the safest city in the south. You know what's funny about that is that the zip code, that Germantown, which Germantown is right there in Shelby County, Memphis, that is actually one of the safest zip codes in Tennessee. But it's like a very small community. Get outside of that and there's some, you just gotta know where you're going. You gotta know where you're going. Oh, see you Danielle. Have a good evening. Thanks for stopping by.
So Jeff said, have me say milk. I'm not sure why. Yeah, I say milk, right? I think a lot of Michiganders say milk. I say milk.
With an I and an A is milk?
No, they, they say it, it's like an E, N E L K. That's how a lot of people say it. Milk. I say milk with an I. So that's why, I think that's why he said it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But a lot of people say milk.
Are you asking me or are you asking Nurse TT? Is it creek or crick?
Creek.
Yeah, it's a creek. It's milk.
Say, say roof. Is it roof or rough?
Oh, it's a roof.
It's a roof, right?
A dog goes rough.
Right. Absolutely.
A crick is what you have in your neck. A creek is a body of water.
Right. It's a running body of water.
But you know, that's why I've never heard anybody ever say the Crick Indians. It's the Creek Indians, right?
Harry Williams says moo juice.
Moo juice. I got fleeced in Knoxville. What's that mean? Fleeced in Knoxville? Roof, dog goes roof. What is wolf? So say wolf.
Wolf. It's a wolf.
And then I gotta go, I can't, heck, I can't even, I can't even say those words. Most of joy, it is live. I am live. Nurse TT is live. She came up here to help me with Otter Creek. Who is no longer alive. They left. They went, um, they went south. And then we've raided, uh, Megan Fox's and she wasn't, she doesn't like me.
Wolf.
She's a bully. And we've just been having fun since then. We've been, we've talked about the news, new news on Lynette's illegitimate, maybe childling. I don't know what it.
Is it pop or soda?
It's Coke. Everyone knows Coke. It's like, what do you call, uh, you know, like a grape? What do you, grape soda? It's a grape Coke. You know, it's like, we, we, what do you want to drink? I want a Coke. Dr. Pepper, okay? Yeah, I'll Dr. Pepper Coke.
I'll take a pop. Whether it's Pepsi Coke.
No. You know what's weird is I found out that people in Maryland, in Baltimore, particularly, call a water fountain a bubbler?
Oh.
I thought that was weird when the guy told me. He said, um,
We call it drinking fountain.
Yeah, I've heard drinking fountain.
We call it drinking fountain.
It'd be a whole lot cooler if it was like real drinking fountain. Why are those back? Like those, that was the biggest thing about the, um, pandemic was, all those got shut down and now they're opening back up. And I'm like, nobody drinks out of those things. Those things are filthy. I'm not touching one.
No. They get it, but then again, us, you know, Gen Xers, we used to drink out of, uh, water hoses, so.
What's wrong with the water hose?
Nothing. But apparently, these, these kids don't understand that we drink out of water hoses.
Yeah.
That's a thing. They think, they think it's, why would you drink out of a water hose and not go in the house and get it from the fountain or from the faucet?
Well, how do you think the water gets into the faucet?
Because we were hacked out of the house.
It comes in through a hose. Just pipes all together. It's just a hose. It's no kind of hose.
Jeff, I can't even say that.
Uh, what's happening?
Jeff says, Nurse TT, get the expert to say, there you go. Say that.
T falls. Go towards the T falls.
Oh, I love it.
If you know, you know. It's the T falls. That's where people go. I'm gonna take some, uh, I got some, uh, John Deere green spray paint. And go up there and say, right on there, White Rabbit, I love you and John Deere green. That's true love right there.
Oh, that's too funny.
Oh, gosh, let's see here. Um,
Yep, garden hose.
Wait, hold on. Is garden hose, is that something different?
Water fountain or garden hose.
Getting punished for the electrical cord, we, was called getting hit with a switch. Oh, first of all.
That was going out.
A switch is a switch.
Going out and getting a willow branch. That's a switch.
Yeah, that's a switch. Now, uh, but getting punched with an electrical cord, that's, um, people pay a lot of money for that.
I plead the fifth. I plead the fifth.
And so like, this is a new thing. I didn't realize. And like Australians say very different, uh, altogether. But yeah, car buggy, like I've, I'm gonna get a shopping car, I'm gonna get a shopping, I'm gonna, yeah, a shopping buggy. I don't know, it just comes out.
A cart.
I've never had anybody, have you, if I said, go get a buggy, would you know what I was talking about? Would you be able to come back with a cart?
Yep.
But yeah, it's the same thing. I've never, I mean, that's just a, that's a new one for me that that's, that's a difference. And the first time I heard about it was, um, um, from Australia. Yeah, it's a cart. Or it's a buggy. Or it's Mario Kart. Put Mario in there. You, you know, you get into a cart and then like push through the, uh, parking lot real fast and your buddy lets go and you're just flying down. That's Mario Kart.
Done it.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's always a good time. Ooh, no, nope. Nothing like a good piece of hickory. Nothing like a good piece of hickory. Um, Becca Lynn, yeah, that's, uh, MG Law. He's big on that. Last night he was talking about that. Have you heard about this Nurse TT that they're telling people to, uh, stockpile?
Yeah, sorry. Wasn't it something to do with the solar flares or something? I was looking at it. Yeah, I, I think it's another Y two K thing. Yeah, when they thought everything, the world was gonna shut down during Y two K.
And nothing happens. Well, everything's gonna happen. And then you can put a date on or something like that. Everything gets all, uh, serious. I don't know. But they're saying it's gonna be solar flares?
That's what I was reading.
You know what's gonna happen? This ha, this thing happens out west. It's, see, they, they depend way too much on solar power out there. They're just gonna run out of power.
True story.
Oh, man, I live, uh, we got TVA power. We got, we got dams and, uh, nuclear. So I'm not worried about. Uh, eclipse is cool. There's no, uh, crown. Oh, hang on. No way, really? That's, uh, so the, the prepping thing, that's a, that's a very good life skill. That's something that, uh, uh, it's weird. People will look at you like, oh, that's crazy. But then when something happens, it's like, oh, that wasn't so bad. Like when everybody ran out of toilet paper a few years ago.
Yeah, they say, they say, don't look at, uh, solar eclipse with your bare eyes. He said that eye doctors are gonna be busy.
Yeah, I'm, um, yeah, I'm not gonna be looking at eclipse. It's not even happening over here. So, I don't know. It's just weird. They're gonna call it the National Guard. They're telling you to be prepared. And I'm like, I don't even know when this eclipse happens.
So what is the chat heard about what's going on with, uh, the solar eclipse? Like what's supposed to happen and why are they wanting us to prepare?
Yeah, what do you guys know about this? Oh, my gosh. Uh, during, until you can tear glass up and it's incredible. Best thing you can do is learn to garden. Why would you not have two weeks of food? So, yeah, that's, um, we had a really bad, uh, snowstorm here recently.
Oh, yeah, snow down there is like detrimental.
Ten inches and, uh, we live in the county and we don't have snowplows. So after the snow hit, two days later, the frozen, uh, rain or whatever, the ice storm came through. And it was just got a layer of ice on top of the snow. So we didn't do anything for like, uh, seven days and, uh, started running out of food. I was like, but that wasn't my fault. I told my wife, I was like, honey, we need to stock up. There's a storm coming and she, have I told you all this story? Oh, my gosh, no, y'all are, oh my gosh. So, okay. I wake up one morning and my phone says, National Weather Advisory, coming two days, there's gonna be this huge storm coming through. Blah, 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 blah. And I look at it and go, hmm. Well, maybe we need to go to store. So I tell, I'm told White Rabbit, I'm like, hey, listen, there, this is happening. I was like, if this is coming out of my phone right now, we need to hit up the stores before people get off work. It was like, uh, that was on a, and I said, before they get off work, the Monday came the storm. So it was like, uh, Saturday? Maybe, yeah. So I was like, we gotta do it before, you know, as soon as we can. So here we go. We go to Costco. We go in, I don't know, we'll say I went to the bathroom. She's got the cart. And I said, you know, I come, I go, I text her, I'm like, okay, where are you? I find her. And the cart is full of pillows. Of like, why are there six pillows in the cart? She's like, oh, because we need them for the new bed deal. Blah, blah. I was like, okay, I was like, that's great. We need to go get some food. So we start getting food and stuff. We come back and, um, you know, snow cups. Well, like about four days later, she's like, I started to get worried we're gonna be running out of food. I was like, but you are. Why? So we didn't get enough the other day. I was like, but we got all those pillows. Oh, you should have heard me stream about that. Cause I was like, why are we getting all these bill, pillows? I was like, what we need is, we need essentials because again, you don't know how long you're gonna be stuck. And yeah, oh, it was, it was hilarious. So obviously you can tell, I still give her a hard time when she's not within throwing distance.
That's funny. That is funny. Can't eat pillows.
No, you can't. No, you can't. And, um, it's, it's a longer story. I mean, we recently have had our, both our families move in with us. And, uh, you know, it's, it is what it is. We're very happy. But all of a sudden, you're like, wait a second, we're out of milk. We can't just go down to the store and get some. Uh, so here, April eighth, my college is gonna be closed here in Lucas County, Ohio, because we're in the middle of its path and we're gonna have tons of people here. Hotels are booking up. No kidding, Heidi. That is so crazy. like uh we were talking on um maybe like MG laws last night or something it was like uh what if everybody just has it wrong? Well somebody forgot to carry the one you know and it's off by a day or two and also like all these people show up and they're out here and they're like looking up in the sky and the eclipse never comes could you imagine what would have how YouTube we just light up oh my gosh um
Oh they went booked the hotels went to time off work all for nothing.
Iron Rabbit have well water and powers off have a hand pump god leave it. She's awesome god she is awesome uh Iron Rabbit's a farmer.
Sounds like my daughter. My daughter my middle daughter was born in the wrong time.
You know that's my my mother-in-law is that way and um she said one thought she's like I often wonder you know what would have been like if uh she raised my wife like on on a farm and all stuff I was like you're out of your mind lady I do not wanna go out and milk beast I do not wanna get up at the crack of dawn and have to worry about something you know no she's like.
Collect the eggs milk the cows.
Yeah she's like no she's like I like pretty I like cute animals I can go and like scratch their faces that's right oh my gosh my wife she's she loves like cows she's like they always look like they have itchy faces and so she's like I just wanna scratch their faces.
Cows are very very intelligent they're they're actually I feel like more like pets like they could be a pet they're very docile. I love cows.
Some people have them inside their house.
Yeah.
That's weird they have what are the the Irish cows are those the small ones that with long hair?
I think so I think you're right.
Yeah I don't want that I don't want any cows in my house I don't want a teacup pig in my house I live with a blue tick coonhound that is enough. Oh she is a uh she she's a nut.
Uh Stacy is cutting up in the chat.
What's happening with Stacy?
She said I can't milk my husband all the time.
Oh that's getting immortalized. That's being immortalized.
Oh Stacy I'm crying.
Nurse TT I'm gonna leave you out of this this is getting immortalized.
I I'm not muted.
Oh no that's okay. Oh yeah that's that's there we go alright that's cool.
That is hilarious.
New screenshot. Oh Stacy you're my new favorite person.
That's hilarious.
Well let's see this is what happened so I say you're getting immortalized wait actually you know I can take that down sorry um so Texas Jen she in the chat she did this but there it is why won't that pop up? It's not showing in mine. It's not showing in mine there it is so oh wait that's not Texas Jen sorry sorry wrong one. There it is so anyway yeah I'd like to immortalize the the great comments but yeah that was a that was another good one. So.
Oh god look at uh what is this AT three forty seventh comment.
I'll see here I gotta find it go find it I'm so far behind.
Feed your husband to get more milk.
Oh my gosh you guys you guys are awesome. Oh send me a message in discord I'll send it to you.
Oh my god.
Oh the meeting was canceled sorry Lynette you missed out but we're looking for you.
Yeah you should have shown up.
Now yeah.
There's a big surprise waiting for you.
Have freed people out last night when legendary changed the names oh my gosh oh it was so funny you guys so y'all in the chat you guys are starting to realize me like I'm a goofball with everything right so there's always a joke behind something and that happened last night oh that was oh
True story ghostery.
If you want a happy one. Oh gosh you guys. I'm out I can't do it I'm done oh geez.
I'm trying my hardest to stay appropriate.
I don't know how so like we do have a a very large new audience and I don't know how people take jokes so I'm trying to tune it down a little bit it's this Friday we're gonna have um we're supposed to have Tom Gillis come on that guy is crazy wild he's um I'm gonna tell Tom but yeah he might want to tune it down turn it down just a little bit uh but he's cuz he's a PGA pro and he's from Boston so you imagine you know just he has a very colorful colorful language.
Look at Leonard Preston. Oh my god.
Oh gosh.
I can't I can't see.
Well welcome to welcome to the here it is.
Oh my god.
You're right Amy you're right and um yeah Effin L's always been the the ruckus show oh my gosh um it's all I like to hear.
I get no no showers. Well Nurse TT she up there acting bougie she ain't down here playing cuz I can't get into the chat I'm afraid to do the connect it to the chat with the stream yard cuz I'm afraid we get booted off I'm here I can see you.
You're fine. Yeah I'll be fine listen thank you so much for answering my call.
Oh you're welcome.
Was like you didn't get some update I know who everybody is I was like looked down I saw your name I was like oh that's awesome um.
You could have brought any one of them up here Heidi would have known uh no shower probably would have known.
Here's here's the thing I uh you had sent me a message.
I know.
So I knew how to get back to you.
Right.
Um now listen so here's the thing guys uh do not have a trivia planned for tonight because I thought this meeting was gonna go for a long time. No taco Tuesday.
Aw that sucks I missed it last week I came in in the last three questions.
Hey Gary. So unless the White Rabbit's got some surprise for me I don't know if a taco Tuesday cuz I told her I was like hey listen I'm going on live at like six o'clock or six thirty seven they got this thing and she's like okay so what about taco Tuesday I was like I don't know I I don't know so leave your notifications on if she's got something I'll put that up other than that um guys thank you so much Nurse TT thank you for your time.
Thank you guys it's great being on.
Oh let me see here do you um you say other people are on?
Oh I don't know I haven't looked anybody else live?
Let me see if there's anybody on and send you guys somewhere fun. You know what guys would y'all mind doing me a favor this is a this is a dude he's a friend of mine um he probably has like a small number of people in his chat uh he's in a nursing home it's Michael Malloy show I've got his t-shirt I'm gonna stop this there's a hundred eighty two of y'all if y'all would just go over there and hit the like button for him you would make his day it'd be your good deed give him some orange hearts but he I think he hates hearts so that's awesome do that for him I love you guys thank you so much Nurse TT hang on a second and um everybody else yeah thanks guys we'll be back with better stuff maybe next time.
I love you.